Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners to order. Today is March the 5th at 9:00 in the morning. Please rise from the planks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item 3, any citizen desiring to be heard?
Yes, that will be me.
All right, ma'am, could you state your name so we can get that in our minutes?
Yes, my name is Rhonda Boines and I live at 4 Sherrengale Drive, right off Academy Road, and I appreciate what you do, but I have some concerns about our road has been really in a lot of bad shape. I know we have a lot of traffic during the summer, you know, the city was coming back and forth, I know doing work further down, and so I was just wondering, you know, can we get gravel or, you know, just what could be done, just concerned.
I'm not sure.
That'd be yours often.
Mine?
Okay.
No, it'd be mine, I think. So that's south of the old Highway 33?
From the hospital, I'm about two and a half miles just straight south.
South, okay. Actually, we're gonna pave that road this year.
Well, praise God. Thank you so much.
We're gonna pave that.
So that answer all my questions.
We're gonna pave that all the way down to Prairie Grove.
Okay, I really appreciate that, because I've been out there 30-plus years and, you know, they've done a good job, but the last past year's been kinda lacking and, you know, I was just concerned, but, you know, usually I'll call and ask, you know, can we get this or that done, and they usually try to get it done when they can, so.
Yeah, they're gonna start the major rebuilding, the base, probably in another month down there.
Okay, and I know we had some, a company that was doing some gas lines, I think it was, and they kinda did a lot of damage to it and didn't take care of it, and so that was really my concern, but I appreciate you listening and answering my questions, so I'm a happy camper today.
No worries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Uh-huh.
Item number 4, consideration and possible action on approving minutes of February 28, 2018.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Make the motion.
I've got a motion and a second, all, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes without objection. Item 5, consideration and possible action on accepting bi-monthly report of David Ball, Emergency Management Director.
Highlights for your reference for the last couple of months? Couple of months, maybe a half a week. There's more to it than just the highlights. There is something, just so you guys are aware of, I was notified last week, and I believe Marvin was as well, March the 21st is the date that has been selected right now. There's gonna be a couple of representatives from Oklahoma Water Resource Board is gonna be up here, and we're going to do, through FEMA floodplain, a CAV, which is a community assistance visit. They come around, I believe it's every seven or eight years, they're supposed to go visit each county in the state that's under the FEMA program.
They won't test the water?
They won't test the water. What they'll be looking for is violations in the floodplain, is what they're looking for, major violations, so I, I think we've done a good job trying to keep the big stuff out of the floodplain, but there potentially is a resident that's bought six acres and maybe is not aware, and there may be something minor that they're gonna find, but I don't think it's gonna be anything major, that I'm aware of.
You gotta come test the water if you're gonna do something.
It's a different provision on that deal, but I've got a preform that I, he sent me Friday that I'll fill out and get back to them this week on that. The other thing, just while I have you guys' attention, typically, and Marvin, we haven't visited, and I should've gotten with you last week, and it was just a crazy week, basically, this right here is the first part of my EMPG grant to submit. I mean, Monty's been through the routine before, when he was chairman, Mike's been through the routine, but this'll be my first part to submit for my EMPG grant that we have to do four times a year.
Okay.
So at some-
What's the acronym mean?
Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Okay.
It's our grant that we've done nine years, I think, the last nine years.
I remember coming through the board.
Each quarter, though, I have to submit what we've been doing. At some point, and I don't know if you wanna do it right now, but at some point, since you're our chairman now, I need you to sign for me, I go from there. We haven't ever run it through the board in the past, I've just gone to when Monty was chair, when Mike was the chair, so, I don't know, however you guys wanna do it, we'll do it that way, but I need to get my first quarter stuff submitted. When we're done, it'll be, uh, so.
Just to clarify, Marvin, this is just required documentation for a grant application that this board already approved and submitted?
Yes. So like I said, four times a year, I'll come to you and we'll go from there, so I'll get this submitted, and then hopefully, within a couple of months with the state's payroll system, we'll get our first check of, should be around $5,000. You guys have any questions?
Anything else? Oh, I just wanted to update you, on our debris removal?
Yes, sir.
That we waited on, and we waited on, and we waited on. We came up short, about $500, and FEMA said that we didn't do enough work to qualify for any reimbursement at all, so we didn't get anything out of that.
On the, just the debris part?
On the debris removal, and, yeah.
Okay. Did, if I may ask, did FEMA tell you that, or was it somebody from the state telling you that?
FEMA.
Okay, so if you would like, let me get, reach out to Alden, the gentleman from OEM that we visited with?
Right.
And would you like to try to sit down with him and just to verify that what FEMA's told you is correct?
I, I wouldn't mind at all, I just don't wanna waste a whole lot more time on this. I'm about to get, like, a few of the other commissioners in this county and just say, I ain't messing with FEMA anymore, I'll just clean it up, because by the time I get the paperwork done, I got twice as much work in it.
Unfortunately, and unfortunately, that's the game that they play. I mean, sometimes it honestly seems like they do that stuff on purpose, just so we don't, but I get as frustrated as you guys do, because I get to talking to one FEMA person, and then you call them, and then they say, oh, I'm back in Tennessee, I'm not doing that anymore, you gotta go find somebody else, and it is definitely a very frustrating.
We've talked to three, three different FEMA people that are, that were in charge, right? So there's been three people change that were in charge. The thing that kinda concerns me a bit is, you know, we've got this federal infrastructure assistance program that's gonna be coming down, and if they put those people from FEMA in charge of, you know, distributing the funds, I'm not sure how much is gonna get down to work.
Could be a tough proposition, anyway.
How long we been working on my bridge project with FEMA and?
Over two years.
I still ain't got it.
And we met, we had a meeting on your bridge Friday afternoon, and we're seeing some light, they've, State guy mentioned, they've had a high turnover, he's hoping, but I've been told this numerous times before, though, he's hoping within the next two to three weeks to be able to close out your project and get you the money that's owed to you, but.
Next thing is, well, we're broke.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that would come up as part of our conversation was, State doesn't have any money, so, I know, it is definitely a very frustrating proposition and maze to have to go through, but I'll, let me reach out to Alden and just verify with him, because I would hate to, the FEMA gentleman to say no, not knowing everything, and let me just, let's just make sure, because we've done most of all the work and everything, so if it's just a matter of he said no, let me reach out to Alden and just double check, just to make sure.
All right, thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I think that's it. I guess I would mention the last thing, you know, I have asked OEM the last three or four years as a special project on my EMPG grant for a light tower. I think that's something that we're lacking in the county, and a light tower would be one that you could pull on a little trailer, a little deal behind a truck, to set up if we had any type of emergency situation, and it wouldn't have to necessarily be an emergency situation, it could be, if you guys are working on a bridge, and it's winter time, and you need, you know, it gets dark at 5:00, and you need 30 more minutes of light, if some major 89ers, you know, there may be, you know, something along those lines, but we don't, that I'm aware of, nobody in the county as far as a public entity has a light tower anywhere. I do have a very small one that hooks in the back hitch of my county truck, but my county truck has to be there, and it, it's helped us on some fires, and it's helped us on a few little things, but I think if we somehow could figure out a way to get a light tower that we could set up, stand up, turn on, would definitely be beneficial for us in the county.
I agree. I've, I've seen them used by the National Guard, the Army Guard, during tornado activities at night, when a tornado comes through and, and, you know, pound a house down, setting up a, a big light like that allows the first responders a little more light to search those areas and that, that sort of thing. They come in handy, I can see where they could be used.
So David, with that being, didn't you say there's a chance you can get funding through?
There's a chance I could go through OEM and get reimbursed, but I can't day-to-day that OEM definitely would.
Sure, so I guess my question, if general government or someone funded this light plan, there's a chance that we can get reimbursed?
There would be a chance, yes.
What's the estimated cost?
Um, well, I happen to know where there's one, with about less than 70 hours on it, for $5,500. I'm gonna go look at it this morning, I just found out about it late Friday afternoon, and I didn't-
Is it owned by a public entity?
I don't believe so, it's owned by a private company, I believe.
If it's Friday morning, why do you wonder about it?
Let's talk Friday morning.
I think it would be well worth looking into, to that, if you wanna.
Well, if you got time after meeting, we'll run that.
Okay, that would be great, I appreciate that, that's the last thing. Thank you, guys.
All right. Well, I'll move that. Any other questions for David?
I'll move that we accept the bi-monthly report, in a second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the report, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item number 6, consideration and possible action on approving professional services agreement between Anna Salas Ocampo and Logan County Health Department for interpreter and early intervention critical services. Why does the health department need an interpreter, I'm just curious?
They have a very large clientele of Spanish speakers.
Non-English speaking of Spanish descent, okay.
Yes.
And it's something they've already approved?
Yes, but because it's an agreement, it has to come down to the board. It, it's exactly what we have with quite a few others for them.
I'll move we approve, in a second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes without objection. Item 7, consideration and possible action on approving professional service agreement between Glenda Genagan?
Jarnigan.
Jarnigan, excuse me, and Logan County Health Department for custodial services.
Make the motion.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes without objection. Number 8, consideration and possible action on approving resolution, accepting $2,523.20 donation from Tony Zieglerberg Gruber to District 2 for tin horns to be placed on Midwest Boulevard in District 2.
I'll make the motion, in a second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes without objection. Number 9, consideration and possible action on approving resolution, approving signatories to inmate trust account for the sheriff's office.
When they switched over commissary sales services from Aramart to Tiger, they had to re, they're having to redo the bank account at first, at Farmer's Emergence that holds that, so they're opening an account for the Tiger distribution and assigning the signatories to that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes without objection. Item 10, consideration and possible action on consent agenda.
We don't have any straight transfers, these are transfers from previous fiscal years into the current fiscal year.
So you just want me to do double duty there in seven seconds? What the hell?
Always go off in lava land, and you're never off in lava land.
Go ahead and get these sprays ready.
Cash guns.
I moved a whole $97.50 from one year to the next.
We'd already moved all of it, that was due to a canceled check.
Aye. That's cool.
That's Cherry Manoa County, isn't it? $500?
No, minus 3.
Well, can't you get $3 on there? You're rich.
Yeah. Yeah, that five bucks, that'd go a long ways on a road district. There you go.
Costs more than that to collect it and process this paperwork.
Oak Springs got 107.
It's actually up a little bit.
Huh, okay. Good. Is that reflective of a healthier economy and more taxes than that? Sales tax being collected, or?
Well, I, I don't know on that, because the, what, motor vehicle and some other forms of, of taxes, what builds that CBRI, it really has not leveled out, it's, it'll go up and down monthly pretty randomly. Now, it's doing a lot better than the $11,000 months that we saw for, for a while.
That was back in 2016-ish, wasn't it?
Yeah, so it's.
So Troy, that's the sales tax for the fire departments, and a whole collected $89,062.53, then we divide that by 13?
Well, that total you just read also included their interest. If you flip that back, you'll see just sales tax. Sales tax is even to all three divisions, as far as the roads, the jail, and the fire department.
Should be the same, except for the interest that we get for running.
Right, and then it's, yes, and then it's equally divided by 13.
So ours was $88,830. Also a tax.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah.
That was the, that would be the total, because it was divided, and then it's divided by three.
Yes. Right. Sure as I know.
They are on the fire department.
No, they're not.
They don't get anywhere.
Deer Creek is not included.
We've got 14.
Oh, Deer Creek, Deer Creek. I was thinking cash, and I'm sorry.
All right, is that it for the consent?
That's it.
And entertain a motion.
I'll move we approve, in a second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes without objection. Item 11, any citizen desiring to be heard?
I'll read it.
Hearing none. Number 12, comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners?
I don't have any questions. I guess the only thing I would have is David Ball brought up the light plan deal, is this something the board would consider funding through the general government, maybe to purchase that, then maybe get reimbursed, or do we need to look for other revenues?
I think it's a good chance of us getting reimbursed, and depending on the cost, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
That would be nice.
$5,500, this would be available through capital outlay in general.
So I think we probably should.
Put it on the agenda.
Yep.
Mull it over officially. Vote on it, that kind of thing.
I know the sheriff's office had to use it last time, David Ball, made a little light deal, it was a rescue.
Yeah.
Hey, maybe we get the sheriff to pay for it, he's not here.
Hey, I was written out of the deal, right? Anything else?
That's all I got.
I, I've got one thing I wanted to bring up, kinda refresh. Troy talked, gave us a resolution from Garfield County. Sorry, Garfield County-
Thought I had that down.
About EMS board and election, where they've got school, school boards, or school zones inside their county, and establish in a 522 board, and basically, I called up there and talked to them, and they're gonna establish one 522 board with both of those school districts, so both of them together will be in one 522 board. So there's not one for each school district, is kinda what I was getting at. So, knowing what some of us had talked about, and listening to some of the other conversations, there was discussion about the possibility of expanding one, one 522 board, if, you know, we were able to get other ones. If we were able to get other ones voted in. We, we can get them voted in, but I've talked with Lowell, I sent him an email, because looking at paragraph J of Article 10, Section 9C, if- Give that to Troy, please, she's already got one. It talks about expanding districts between counties, okay, when you got a school district that, that goes between counties, that's the only time it mentions expanding, and it's under that, that auspices of between counties that appendix, or paragraph J talks about. Lowell sent me an email back this morning, and I haven't read much of it, but he basically reiterated the same thing, and that basically what we would need to do, if we wanted to, would be to put on the ballot to create a school district with as many of these, an EMS district with as many of these school districts as we thought was prudent. On the back, I listed what I thought was the five school districts that we had discussed, leaving out Luther, Edmond, and Deer Creek, because they're already serviced by EMS. That, that would bring a total of a three-mill tax to just over $121,000, about 121.7. While that's not a whole lot of money, I'm not sure that you'd be able to run ambulance district on that, or, or if that would be any benefit to one of the existing ones, because a 522 district can contract with another one for ambulance service, so it's, it's kind of, kind of strange. Troy, you got anything to add to that?
I haven't got to delve real deeply with all of this that went back and forth on Thursday and Friday, however, I do have one, one thought process, and I think that we can address to Lowell with the idea of the expansion, because when you do read Article 10 about EMS, it indicates that they can be created and dissolved, and, and, you know, some of these things done, so I think maybe using the term expansion may not be the correct term, and one of the options that could be looked at would be actually, we, we would back to the two-vote question, but it would still just be within the county borders, and that is to dissolve EMS I-1 and create one main, out of everything that's not included in the other, since we can do it by school districts, and, and that kind of thing has now been clarified, so that might be another option to look at.
But if you tried to decrease it, you can't do that, because it goes over and it can't reach the county.
But, but I'm not saying going countywide.
We're checking.
I'm not saying touch any of them, I'm saying deal with I-1, coming down, and creating a new that would be effective for I-1 and all these other districts that are outside this though.
The ones in the southern part, the county already have ambulance service, they don't need that, they don't need the additional tax either.
Okay, so what I'm saying, though, and like I said, I haven't floated this to anyone, right? If I-1, essentially it's back to the two-ballot question, issue that we would've had, you dissolve one and create a new one.
I guess I'm wondering what we gained there.
I don't know.
Other than to have one large EMS district and three smaller ones in, in an open area in the south still, I mean, there's only, there's only a finite amount of-
I agree.
You know, money there.
And like I said, I haven't, I mean, that was just something that did pop up, and I don't know as an option, just simply because one singular board, one contract, you, you don't have the contract issue, they would have to cover that area, I guess is where I was, and, and like I said, I haven't researched.
And that would help Langston, Cole, Lamahol, and Orlando, but it also leaves out Marshall.
Why would it leave out Marshall? He's talking about bringing in all the school districts that are not part of the district right now.
Well, can you, well, there's nothing in Marshall two dissolves.
Well, there's, what's Marshall?
Covington. Covington Douglas.
Well, it's, yeah, it's in there. Covington Douglas is.
But you're talking about just do I One.
I know.
See, and in the Covington Douglas area, Life EMS is already contracted for that to provide support there.
I don't think they do it though.
Miller is running some calls up there.
Yeah, they're running some as well. The folks at the health department, though, told me Life EMS has that and if they do, they can kind of get in trouble for not responding.
Well, if it takes them two hours to respond, then it's just, well, they're gonna be responding.
Yeah.
It's kind of like not covering.
Well, I agree with that. Anyway. Now, it would, it would cover that money, Covington Douglas School District, the entire school district in cases of Marshall, right?
But it'd all be I One, right?
No.
Or can you have?
Take out what I was saying because I haven't researched what Martin.
So this is, this is I One, this Green School District here, right? So in order to expand I One to the areas that we've talked about here, you'd have to put on the ballot to dissolve the people in I One to vote to dissolve that EMS district. And then they would have to vote to join a larger school district.
To create.
To create another EMS district larger that we would have, that would just add Guthrie School District to these five. And basically, that's what the larger EMS district would be. At that point, you're talking about five hundred, a little over five, about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year in funding. Listening to some of the city's council meetings where they've discussed this, they're talking about being short millions of dollars, not hundreds of thousands. So a couple hundred thousand dollars is not gonna assist them in their long-term plan to keep ambulance service a viable option. So however, that's, that's not, I mean, we need to be cognizant of that, but our main focus is on providing ambulance service for these rural areas out here.
Well, in my mind, I thought that Guthrie, I One would take in Maho, Orlando, Coyle, then whatever south we have to do. But then I Two would take in the Covington Douglas area. So would that make it a four-question ballot then?
Well, so now, if you, you're talking about EMS Two here, right? Okay, so that would, to dissolve that, now you're gonna have to get over to Kingfisher County and run a ballot over there for them to vote to dissolve it as well.
Your options, if I may, Monty, with Covington Douglas, since tomorrow Garfield is voting to take in the part of Covington Douglas that only lays in Garfield County. From what we're understanding from Lowell, we've used the word expansion because logically, that's the way it would seem. You would expand for I Two to take in that. But they can't technically just expand it. So for I Two to take in Covington Douglas and not have to deal with a two-county ballot issue, Covington Douglas would have to be part of a different IMS that contracts to I Two. That that's the only way to make that happen without going to a ballot issue in two counties.
And then the other part of that is, we appoint a board to that EMS district once it's created. And it's up to the board on whether they want to contract, bid themselves, or hire a sole source or a commercial provider to do it.
And that's kind of where I was hashing out and threw out here with I One dissolving and coming in to pick all of this into one unit, is you've eliminated the issues that we've ran into with board members or having enough availability as a contract to get service providers because that new district has to provide. So some of the issues that we've seen with I Two over here with the fact that they don't have a lot of funding and have struggled to keep a provider would really not be the issue if it was just this one big district because they have to provide it. That was kind of where I was going in that train of thought.
So with a commercial provider already over here in Two and also EMS Eighty-Nine, it's the same contract provider.
So they would have the ability to split their district and contract part of it to one company, another part to another county.
Right.
So on the board members, would it be a, still be a five-member board?
Yes, be, be so.
Then, I mean, are you gonna take one out of each school district?
I think it says you have to.
Yeah, it has to be a minimum of five. You can have more, but they have to be an odd number. And I don't, I don't think that would be a fair split. And, but I'd leave that up to Mike to figure out because when you get Wellston in there, what?
Yeah, a little bitty Wellston?
Yeah, that's one small area. Do you really want to have?
Ten houses.
One, one representative from that.
Yeah, but you got Perkins right there, Perkins Tryon. There's quite a bit of housing in there.
Right.
Along that, that border, it's starting to get populated, so. I don't know. I mean, be included with anything figured out for Coyle and Langston, I think.
Okay, the other thing is, if we want to put something on an early ballot in June, we have to have that to the election board by April the eleventh, any resolution we wanted to do.
Well, I think there's so much to hash out, I think we're gonna need to shoot for a November ballot. I mean, just trying to get off.
Well, I just, I'm just providing the information, right? I'm not advocating one way or another on that, so.
Just a lot of stuff to get down, language and what have you.
Well, I just copied what Garfield County did. I mean, that's pretty easy. Add, add the additional school districts in there and change Garfield County to Logan County, I don't forget.
But the problem is, let's say that I One fails to dissolve, then what?
I think he's just, I think what he's looking at is a new EMS that would just comprise these five districts and then they could contract to I One.
Contract whoever they want.
Each one of them?
Right.
So each one of them had their own EMS?
No.
Be one district?
Be one.
Five schools.
Because the way Garfield County's going, they've got two school districts. If there's gonna be one EMS district.
And doing it that way, Covington Douglas, if, let's say that that's these five districts, which just to identify is Covington Douglas, Maho, Orlando, Coyle, Perkins Tryon, and Wellston. If those five school districts came together, voted to create one EMS district, then that board of directors can split up and contract who, where that that board chooses to do so. So at that point, theoretically, the Covington Douglas area through the newly established EMS board could contract with Miller to provide that service.
They can contract if one or more service providers.
Exactly, and then they could over, you know, if you look for distance of coverage, if you look where EMS is kind of down in that, that smaller area and that, they may want to look at doing something closer. So, but that newly established board would have the ability to do that. The problem with it is just not a lot of funds to split up.
And that's about the question?
Not yet.
It would, it would have to be though?
Yes.
Yes.
Anytime you raise taxes, property taxes, it has to go to the voters' people.
Unless you get a judgment from a judge. He can impose one.
Okay, so that's.
The only other thing if I could throw out to suggest is when the ballot language is thought about and this is something that would have to really kind of be looked at is, is do you want it to be worded all or nothing? Or do you want it to be that those areas that vote for it will, will join? So if you had four out of five.
Okay, so I asked, I asked Lowell that, that very question. And he responded back this morning and I haven't been able to print that out, but I'll, I'll get you a copy and you can distribute it. Basically, what he said was, it's not, it's not a school district by school district vote at that point. It's all, everybody, all the people and all the population in those five school districts vote on this referendum and the majority wins.
So it isn't all or nothing?
It, well, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, it's not, let.
It wouldn't come down to be just Maho, Orlando, and Coyle.
No, no.
It's everybody or nobody.
Right, well, if you write it that way. But now, now if you want to create more than one five-twenty-two board, then we have to write it that. We can do that as well.
Right.
I mean, you can create a five-twenty-two board with just one school district. Not that some of those would want to do that, but.
I think it'd be better lump them together.
Yeah.
Well, financially, it's your best shot because if you look, what a potential revenue with that three mills is so small.
So whoever's got the largest population base would can, pretty much control the vote on those, on that five area. That's how that would work.
Voting population.
Yes, that's what I meant. Yes, sir.
I think there's a lot to hammer around.
Certainly a lot to look at.
Sure.
It's probably what I get as a head start on it because I'm sure this won't be the last time we talk about it. All right, any other comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for item thirteen.
Make the motion adjourned.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. We are finished.